So we have volunteer applications submitted by several people. And we have the Human Rights Committee charge in our packet as well. Everybody that's been invited to attend. And in our list, we have a list of the current committee vacancies for other boards and committees. Unfortunately, we have a lot of candidates. We can only pick one. What we try to do is see what other interests people have and try to care about. Some of that they might be interested in for other committees. So let me just look for the charge here. So the charge of the Human Rights Committee is to promote Easton's vision of a community that has as its core values freedom from bigotry, hatred, intolerance, and disrespect, to build a stronger, more unified town that respects and recognizes both our diversity and our commonalities, to work with community groups and agencies to educate and promote understanding, to eliminate prejudice and intolerance, and to confront statements and actions that conflict with the core values expressed above. So the people that we have, the first person that we were going to interview tonight had asked if we could take her first because she had a meeting and the meeting got moved up a little bit. Her name is, I hope I pronounced it right, Phoebe Simon Ulysses. And I'm just going to read her application. She's a licensed independent clinical social worker with over 20 years of experience in social work field in private practices, state nonprofit agencies, a member of NASW-MA-MAS chapter, as well as a member of the Greater Boston Association of Black Social Workers, where she serves as the chair of the Community Affairs Committee. She has an unwavering commitment to helping shape and create equitable systems. Her mission is to be a champion for equity and inclusion by supporting efforts and initiatives that will help fuel the structure of change. If appointed, she would take the opportunity to serve as a Human Rights Committee member very seriously and will work in collaboration with colleagues to ensure a stronger town free from bigotry, hatred, intolerance, and disrespect. So she's got a list of other credentials in here that follow in line with that. And I will say that I've met her several times over the past couple of years, and she has shown an interest and has been waiting for a position to open. So that's what I have for her. So next, we have Emma Gershman. Emma, if you want to come up and take the stage here. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
So if you just want to introduce yourself and just tell us, we're just going to ask everybody the same question. So we just want to ask you what your interest is. We have a lot of candidates, so we'll ask you to be a little on the group side.
Great. I'm Emma. I've lived in Easton my whole life. I'm a sophomore at Oliver A. High School. I think that this is a really good opportunity for me to express my interest. My mom's been on the Human Rights Committee and my whole life. It's been something I know I care about, and this is a really good way for me to take a step into it and really see how much I can do. I want to, like, I go to school every day and all my friends, I see a lot of different stuff that happens, good and bad, and I want to help how I can. I think that being in the schools, it will really give me a good way to help communicate some things that may not be known to everyone. And it's just really important to me. I've been volunteering with the Human Rights Committee for a couple of years. People are wonderful. The experiences have been great. The different activities that I've been involved in have all been amazing, and I've seen the impact it can have on a lot of people, and that's really cool to see. And I think if I was a part of it, it would be really awesome.
Great, thank you. I've seen you at a lot of those events too. Craig, when does the Human Rights Committee meet and what time does it happen?
The first Tuesday of the month, and it's six thirty. It's on Zoom. It has been on Zoom for a while, so I'm not sure what's going to happen going forward.
Okay, is that, do you have a problem making that?
Definitely commit to being there.
All right, terrific. Well, thank you so much, and we're going to ask for the next candidate to come up.
Thank you, Emma.
Anytime.
So the next one, Jennifer Healy withdrew her application. So the next person is Carla Keith. Carla, here.
I don't think I can follow that. I think she should be on the committee.
So that actually happens a lot for a lot of our appointments is we have three candidates, and then everybody kind of roots for each other. So that's why I say that it's very, very hard for us to pick one person, especially with, especially when you have.
A young student that wants to get involved.
But what I will say with the Human Rights Committee is that you don't have to be a member of the board to go to all the meetings and contribute and share your voice. So the more people and the more hands and the more enthusiasm, the better.
We actually have 200 people in the alliance this time.
Right, right. So it's great for you to be here and just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Basically, I've been in Easton for 55 years, will be 55 years in August, and I've seen this town change quite a bit. Again, lots of good and lots of good. I've had a background in Brockton for 34 years. I was a principal, and I worked with people with disabilities and a variety of cultures and differences. Why I came here today was something that happened in middle school last week. It was the day before that application came out, and my grandson came home with a very terrible jerk that he picked up at the middle school. It was anti-Semitic. He didn't get it. I'm Jewish, he's half Jewish, and he still didn't get it. So when I saw the application open up, I was like, you know, it's time. I have the time now to be more involved than I did because I'm now retired. I raised two twin boys, my grandsons. They're at the middle school now, going to high school. So I have more time, and that's basically why I'm here.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. One of the things that we do look for on the committee is we look for people with different life experience from different, so I'm glad that you shared with us that you, you know, are Jewish and the story that, you know, sadly, your grandson learned quickly. I remember that one myself at that age too, some of the jokes he came home with. They didn't know what they had.
They did not know it.
They're hurtful.
Quite horrific.
Yeah. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And next, we have Kate Kelly. Oh, Kate wanted to be last, I'm sorry.
I'm here. I took that one.
Oh, all right. So if you want to just introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you wanted to serve on people's radar.
All right, yeah. Hi, I'm Kate. I'm coming from my daughter's girl family, and I'm a little bit late, so thank you. I am, so I'm a mom of three. I have a almost six-year-old, a four-and-a-half-year-old, and an almost three-year-old. So that's really the biggest reason, I think, is I'm so invested in especially children's literacy and using books as tools for celebrating people and cultures and backgrounds, as well as tools for teaching about, you know, different difficult issues like oppression in ways that are geared toward young minds. I'm a high school English teacher at Canton High as well, so through that, I work a lot with curriculum building around more equitable curriculum. I created an elective called American Identities where it's more current events discussion-based around identity. And I teach about historical systemic oppression and then also how it connects with present day. It's also a celebratory class, so more of the pride and the joys of who you are and seeing how your own experiences create your pride, but also create your biases that you have. I also teach a professional development course to educators from all different age groups as well as roles, so like parents, counselors, nurses, as well as teachers, administrators. I teach it more in the, I taught in Walpole, I'm in Bellingham right now, and it's basically my elective but geared toward adults. There are two classes. One is unpacking whiteness, because a lot of the educators that I work with are white. And the other one is geared toward gender and LGBTQ. So I'm just very passionate about education and curriculum, but I've also served on, like, volunteering positions that work with identity. So to see that there was an opening for the Human Rights Committee and to be involved in my own town and doing work that, you know, directly impact my children, but also just is better in my own town is just something I would really, really love to be a part of. I think I bring a lot of education lens, but I just love collaborating with people from all different realms where we can group our minds together and create some good stuff.
Great, well, thank you so much. We appreciate being here. So I'm not sure if you heard select person, Barger, mentioned that the meeting's on the first Tuesday of the month at six thirty by Zoom.
Okay.
So you would have no problem?
No.
Awesome.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think I, I don't think I missed anyone. Oh, I don't. So this is for term expiration of June 30th, 2024. So as I mentioned, we do try to look to diversify the board, you know, for life experience, age, gender, all of the above, culture. So I don't, I think I'm going to start with you, Craig, not to put you on the spot.
Thank you.
This is incredibly difficult to have these conversations, but, you know, I don't know the makeup of the members that you have now and where you think there might be an experienced gap that could be helpful.
Thank you for making me first. I appreciate that very much. I'm delighted to be able to be part of the Human Rights Committee, as Amy knows well. And I find this decision to be very difficult. We have 200 people that are allies, so if some, if one of you, if all of you except one don't get on, consider being an ally, which then opens up your opportunities to get to know more about what we actually do on a regular basis. And it's a pretty diverse group, and we've talked about a particular kind of person recently, and so I'm going to follow up with that. And I'd like to have a student finally on our group, so I'm going to cap my, for Emma Gershman.
Okay, sure. Jay?
Thank you for coming out. And Emma, especially, and I just, thank Carla as well for, you know, saying the selfish things that you did about Emma. I do too love to see students, and you're actively involved now, and you're doing a lot. So thank you to everybody for the interest because it's just super important, and I appreciate what my colleague Craig does in promoting this group's work. My vote is going to be for Kate Kelly.
I also want to thank everybody for coming out. This is the most impossible because everyone has amazing qualifications and is coming from this with great experience, different kinds of table. I too would like to vote for Emma tonight. The reason being is that I really think it is important representation from someone who's in the high school, you know, knows that demographic and understands how to translate and talk to this age group. It's really important for words to be reached, and I think that peer-to-peer interaction is extremely important. When it's coming from someone, a friend of yours, opposed to being, hearing or reading about elsewhere, it really has a bigger impact, and I think you could help drive that, so.
And I am also going to support Emma for the reasons that everyone mentioned above. I think that that is a gap on that committee is to have a young voice, and I think that that's important. So I appreciate you being here. I appreciate everybody from Manhattan. We're going to take a vote, an official vote, and then I have a couple more appointments. So Craig, do you want to make a motion?
A move that we appoint Emma Gershman to the Human Rights Committee with a date.
June 30th.
June 30th of 2024? June 30th, 2024.
Yeah, please do. You want a second?
Yeah, second.
So that's Barger. And Sevens, and all in favor? Oh, wait a minute. We have a roll call vote. I'm sorry. Roll call vote. Sorry, future. Stacy Gershman?
Actually, I know a second gentleman is an issue, but I'll still say Sevens, Kelly.
Full Janette Gershman?
Barger Gershman.
So one of the other groups that we have in town that is always looking for volunteers, I'm not sure if you're aware, but I'm thinking of you, Kate, from your educational background is Raising Multicultural Kids, and I'm not sure if everybody's heard of them, but they are always looking for volunteers, and it's hands-on, action-oriented work. You can do as much or as little as you want, and I would encourage you to reach out to them if you want more information about them there. If you just look for Raising Multicultural Kids on the website, you'll see that. And, you know, stay tuned and come back to this. June 30th is when the reappointments happen, and if people don't become reappointed, a lot, there's a lot of movement on some of these committees because they do a lot of work, so I don't want anyone to be discouraged and really stay focused on it. And go to the meetings, follow it. For anybody that's watching, if you go onto Documents on Demand on our town website, you click through to that, you can check off any agenda that you want that's in the list of meetings that we have and get a notification when an agenda goes out. So you'll, if you are interested in following these meetings, attending them on Zoom or in-person, if they go back to in-person, you'll get a heads up on the agenda two days in advance, and you can put it on a calendar that way. And, you know, as Craig said, it's the second Tuesday of the month, so. So I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, and sorry we can't appoint everyone.
I just want to share something too on a personal. So years ago, when I knew I wanted to serve, I came to a meeting, you know, didn't know anybody, put my hat in the ring for an appointment, and there were three of us, and everything, it's like the other candidates started talking, like, I knew them, like, they were so good. And I didn't get the appointment that night. And I could have left defeated, but instead I had a series of great conversations, and I mean, yeah, yeah. So just, there's the opportunity everywhere, you know, just, so don't walk out of here feeling discouraged at all because that put more fire under me, and I'm really proud of part of this board now and have served on so many of the boards. And I really think not getting the appointment that night was probably the best thing that could have happened for that happened to me, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Dolly, if I may, just before anyone heads out, just trying to beat the snow, we have a variety of vacancies that we receive no applicants for on other boards and committees if anyone is interested. We have the Audit Committee, the Cultural Council, the Shovlott Town Cultural District Management Team, the Economic Development Council, an alternate position on planning and zoning board, which is a really important board that shapes land use policy, Public Spaces Committee, and the Recreation Commission. So those are opportunities as well. Thank you all for coming.
One thing, is it first, is it the first Tuesday or the second Tuesday of the month?
The first.
It's the first. I misspoke, but the first Tuesday of the month.
All right, thank you. Well, congratulations, Emma.
Congratulations, Emma.
The town clerk will be reaching out to you about if they get to come on in, and you'll, you know when the meetings are, and you'll get all that information.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Number two is the Tricentennial Committee. Number two is the Tricentennial Committee. So we have, in 2025, it is having the Easton Tricentennial, and the purpose of this committee is to lead the town in a year-long celebration of Easton's tricentennial that commemorates Easton's long history, engages all Easton residents, and celebrates Easton's enduring 300-year tradition of community spirit. The committee's mission shall be to celebrate the strong Easton town spirit that thrives in our community, to offer diverse programming that is welcoming and inclusive of all Easton residents, to strengthen bonds of family and community with events that bring people together, to involve local youth in cooperation with schools and varied educational opportunities, to recognize the positive and lasting impact of contributions made by Easton community members, to connect the present and past by coordinating, sharing, and supporting historical events, to provide a stage for and spotlight on Easton art, music, and culture, both current and past, and to collaborate with, support, and encourage all Easton nonprofits, commissions, committees, and town departments in taking advantage of the unique opportunity the tricentennial offers to educate the public and to share their own history, goals, and mission. So the tasks are to conduct outreach to the community to ask for suggested events that residents will be interested in attending, and to partner with local businesses, community organizations, nonprofits, and town departments to develop events that appeal to all ages and encourage the great participation of Easton residents and friends, to plan and coordinate a series of events for the recreational, educational, and cultural benefit of the community that will serve to commemorate Easton's heritage and will lead to greater knowledge and appreciation of our history and future, and to develop a strategy to fundraise for the tricentennial events, create a master calendar of events, and develop marketing materials to disseminate information about the events posted by the committee, its partners, and Friends of Easton, and encourage and support other community organizations to host events that highlight their group's mission and their connection to the history of Easton. So that's a mouthful. So we have two candidates for that. The first one is Jeanette Kamara. I see you're Jeanette.
Yep.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Can you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the committee?
Sure. My name is Jeanette Kamara. I was born and raised in Easton. I graduated from all of Ames and from Stonewall College. I've worked here my entire life. I've been with the Bank of Easton for 36 years. Dave Clifton actually called me a couple of weeks ago and said they were in need of maybe a treasurer for the Centennial Committee, and I happen to have a lot of experience in that area, so I was happy to say, yes, I'd be interested. At the bank, I've been there for 36 years, about 25-plus. I've been in the accounting area. In 2020, I became the treasurer, and also for the past 16 years, I've been on the Board of Directors for the Friends of Warland. Excuse me. And for about 15 of those, I've been the treasurer, so I bring a lot of experience. I know sometimes committees are kind of lacking in that financial expertise, especially when it comes to fundraising, so I'm happy to lend my support in whatever way I can.
Great, terrific. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ken is our second applicant. Ken Wood, come on up. Ken, you wanna just, everyone knows who you are, but just for the cameras and the people at home, introduce yourself and tell us.
I'm Ken Wood, for Eastern Food Bank. That's my part-time, full-time job now. No, I was raised in Brockton, but I've lived in Easton since 1962, and I've been involved with a lot of programs in Easton. I was recreation director for a while and was involved with a lot of programs, and I was also on the 275th anniversary break committee for Easton. And of course, I get involved with anything that brings community together, as you know, with the break. And the Halloween Parade was one of our events for the 275th, and that brings community together. And a lot of the stuff has dropped, but I've kept it on going through the years, because that brings a lot of community together. So basically, I've been involved in a lot of things, so mostly you know who I am, so. But I think I have quite a bit of knowledge of what we had done before, and I spoke to Dave about it. He and I were also involved when we did the 100th anniversary for the Ames Estate at Warland. And then also, we did the combined sharing in Easton. Day that we did, we had about 10,000, 15,000 people, where we had hot air balloons and everything over at Warland. Bringing community together. We had the, back then, we had the fire department that did the brigade, you know, they smoke with the fire hose and hooked them all up under hot, and then the water department did hot with water still running, did connections, all those kinds of things. So those are the kinds of things that I'm interested in keeping going for, the different things to go on.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here tonight, Ken.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate it. So I think that this committee has been having kind of a rocky start. I think that they've been having trouble making a forum to have the meetings, and I know, I think they've been on Thursday nights, and they've been in person at the Quiesit House. So do either of you have any problem appearing in person, or I know that sometimes it's hard now that we've switched back from Zoom? I think that for, so again, this is one of those tough decisions. We have two excellent candidates, and I'm really thinking about the makeup of the committee, and also, this is another committee where people can come and participate and bring their ideas, even if they're not officially necessarily on the board. What we used to do before, sometimes they'd say, well, let's expand the board because we really wanna include everyone, and then what happens is you can't get a forum, and then the board's back in a couple of months saying, can you bring it back to the original number, because we can't meet? I really, you know, when we were looking at the original makeup of this board, I remember thinking of somebody for fundraising, and somebody for marketing, and somebody for all of these, and I know that treasurer and somebody to handle the finances, part of, really important on this committee, and we didn't have anybody at that time, which is probably why, you know, they reached out to you. So as much as it makes me feel terrible to not have, you know, put my vote for you, Ken, I would support Jeanette just because of that role for the treasurer position, but I would ask, Ken, that you attend the meetings and still participate, because your historical knowledge is really important. And again, there's gonna be some terms coming up on this, and as vacancies come up, then we'll be filling those as well. What are your thoughts, Jen?
I think you were saying it well. My feelings were the same, in the same way, and again, maybe really challenging decisions to make, but the financial management is critical.
Jamie?
Yeah, very difficult, but I'm gonna vote for Ken.
Thank you. Craig?
Leave it to me, guys.
Poor Craig, he's been an oxie doll.
Yeah, I think that the financial piece is really important, and as much as I think that Ken would add an enormous amount, I'd like to go with Jeanette for this, this time round.
And would you like to make a motion?
I'll move that we appoint Jeanette Kamara to the Tricentennial Committee with the date ending, what is the date?
June 30th.
June 30th, 2023.
Second, Stevens.
So that's Barger and Stevens, and that's a roll call vote. Start with you, Jen.
Stacy Kamara?
Stevens Wood.
Full Janette Kamara?
Barger Kamara.
All right, great. And thank you, both candidates. Ken, I hope that you will go to the meetings and contribute.
I'd like to go to the meetings anyway, because I know where certain things are, like the buried castle.
Yeah. I know.
We were there when they buried.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
And then, because you have your flags and stuff, a lot of things we did, and it's a very involved thing, and, you know, you had trouble with all people for the meetings, but it gets, when it gets down to this event, you're gonna be there every night.
We're gonna need a lot of volunteers, too, so.
That's the way it was before, that's what I'm gonna say.
So thank you. And the town clerk will reach out to you about getting sworn in and give you information in detail on the meeting.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, boy. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
All right. Trying to look at my road map here. What we do in number three was the Contractor Board for Chadr Baravi.
For the next D W items on order, sorry, Walter, Dave will be back here in a few hours, so.
I have a roadmap here that I'm looking at, arrows everywhere. So this is Contractor Board for Chadr Baravi, older model C70 sidewalk tractor, and it's D W 2023-22. So thanks for being here tonight, David. You gonna have a big night ahead of you?
Yeah, I think so, but D W is always up for the challenge, so.
Right, the work makes it happen.
I appreciate you taking us out of order, and sorry, Walter and Linda. Yeah, so this is just a sidewalk tractor, pretty straightforward. Anyone has any questions, be happy to answer those.
I don't have any questions on that.
I just have one question.
Sure.
The old one, what do you do, what happens to the old one? Does it go surplus or what?
So, yeah, we'll surplus that. We'll probably pick it clean of any parts or any useful parts, and some accessories that we can probably use, but yes, once it's outlived its life, we typically might hold on for a spare until something breaks and needs to repair, and then we'll ship it. But we'll put on a public bidding site for this boat.
Thank you. So the cost of this vehicle is $207,784.76, and it's funded through the approved capital funds. So with that, if somebody would like to make a motion?
No move.
Second.
So that's Barger and Stevens. All in favor? Yeah, absolutely. So next, we have the Department of Public Works presentation, and this is a review of the fiscal year 2023 pavement management completed repairs and a presentation of fiscal year 2024 to 26 pavement management.
Thank you. So like we do every year, we come and review what we did last year, and then we can talk about our new three-year plan and just recap some of our other road projects that we have going on. So just a quick overview of pavement management, I've said it every year for the last 11 years, but basically, it's a computer system that uses input of survey of the roads, so we actually survey every single road in town, find out what the condition is, we utilize the traffic volume of those roads, what construction methods are needed for the specific roads, budget, and then the software package to make those recommendations. In this year going forward, we're gonna be moving to a new software platform, and hopefully it will be easier to use, and the outputs will be easier for both the board of select board and public to see. So looking at last year's repairs, we were able to complete about just over 17,000 linear feet of roadwork utilizing mill sanding overlay, and what that is, basically, we mill off the existing surface of the road, we put a stress-absorbing interlayer down, which is called a rubber chip, it's a real thin layer, and then we pave over that at the end with the conventional warm mix asphalt. And we're able to complete that on these roads listed. I don't, we'll read them out unless anyone has a question, and that those roads are actually shown on the map next to us. So that was $1.3 million worth of improvements to our roads last year, and that goes through the pavement management system. Those are the repairs needed and recommended, but we also have some non-pavement management improvements. We were able to get $400,000 in complete streets funding for the Lincoln Street sidewalk, not the entire stretch that's needed, but a good portion from Bay Road down towards Flyway Pond. We then supplemented that with available Chapter 90. That cost us just over $514,000. And then we had to replace the sidewalks on Cranberg Lane. We did that all in-house, rented a sidewalk paver, and did all that work. So the cost is very low, but that's just the material for the asphalt. The staff time doesn't count into that number. But, so overall, last year, pavement management and non-pavement management, we did about $1.8 million repairs. Any other questions about that? No? Great. So just looking at where we've been over the last 11 years, we've spent just under $10 million. Our road surface rating is 71, and we have currently about an $18 million backlog, although that will be going up when we recalibrate the new costs of everything coming forward. Fuel costs are lower, we've had a significant increase in costs lately, so that will be going up. But right now, that's where it stands. And now we can jump into our new plan. So every year, we kind of update our plan and kind of forecast our three-year plan. It's helpful for utility companies, so they, we know where they're gonna be, where we're gonna be, and try to not duplicate efforts. We're gonna be doing some significant amount of crack sealing this year on some of those roads that we've paved over the last 11 years and now need to be crack sealed, so that's sort of a lot for us. We usually don't go that heavy on crack sealing, but it'll be $350,000 worth of crack seal. That's the cheapest repair there is, and it's the most cost-effective. Keeping those good roads in good conditions is essential for a good pavement management plan, so that will be money wise, though. And then we'll be doing some mill sanding overlay on Hilltop Lane, Meadow Brook and Pine Brook, that's all one condo subdivision, and then similar repair on Tyson Road, which is off Central Street. And then we're gonna use ultra-thin bonded overlay, or NOVA chip, on Canton Street. We've used this in many locations in the past. This is our second cheapest repair we can do, so it's a very thin overlay. It's gonna be coming around $10 a square yard, which is, you know, not free, but is still on the cheaper side. Routine maintenance or crack sealing is about a dollar a square yard right now, so this is a $10 a square yard repair, and we're gonna do that on Canton Street, on Summer Street, that portion of Summer Street there, and Union Street. And these are all roads that have been paved in the last 10 to 12 years, so they're coming up to a point now where they need to be covered over to preserve them, otherwise they'll fall further down the pavement deterioration curve and cost us more money. And then we're gonna be doing reclamation on Beech Tree Lane, small road off of Depot Street, and Cedar Drive, and that'll wrap up this year's repairs.
So I think at home, people are probably, some are cheering, and some are saying, I don't see my street up there.
Yeah, that's.
That's one of the hardest things, but when you came on board, I remember that was when I first started, and you were one of the first people that was doing this pavement management plan. It's a little bit more routine in some other towns now, but being able to separate and categorize these, so that you can maximize the useful life and have a system to it, that doesn't mean that things don't move around on that list, but I think it gives people a good guide. Sometimes people feel like they wait for a really long time. Sometimes they do, because of the way that these roads are funded. So when we get Chapter 90 funds, those have not increased since I've been on the board for 11 years, so it's been, you know, when those dollars come out, we're actually able to do much less with the money than we would have 10 years ago, because the cost of supplies and labor and everything have increased, but the funding hasn't. So, not to sound like a whiner, but I think that people do need to know, like, you know, I would be thinking, you know, where's all the money go? Because we hear all this stuff coming from the state that, you know, we have more money than we've ever had, and all the cities and towns are getting more money, and we don't get more money for Chapter 90. And this is a complaint I hear from people, reasonably so, but, you know, one, you can't fix everything with that $18 million backlog, but two, knowing that it's a strategic plan in place to be able to maximize the effectiveness of the money that we do get is really important. So I just wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, Donnie. You brought up three points, and you pretty much covered the rest of my presentation, but I'll keep plugging away anyways.
I'm sorry.
No, that's great. Thank you.
I've been paying attention.
So as you mentioned, Donnie, we do have to shift things around occasionally, so one of the things we're shifting around this year is Foundry Street. So Foundry Street was originally on for this coming year. We intend to do a water main project, we bid that last year. Unfortunately, you just couldn't get water pipe, so one of the many things, supply chain issues. So water pipe was out almost 50 weeks, so we had to put that off. It's actually being constructed right now by our contractor, C Norton. So they'll finish that up this year. We don't wanna pave right behind it. Any type of settlement or anything, we wanna let that settle out, give it a year, and we'll do this next year. So that's one of those things that we have to call audibles and make some adjustments. So Foundry Street, this portion, that was done as a tip project in, I believe, 2009, is definitely in need of some repair. We're gonna be doing some small patching and then cover it with our mill sanding, oh, sorry, with our ultra-thin bonded overlay. And then we have Old Foundry Street, both a section of mill and overlay and a section of reclaim right now. That's the recommendation from pavement management based on the conditions. Once we get out there and design it, we may change that to all mill and overlay, or maybe all reclamation, depending on the condition we find. We'll do some cores and things like that, but. We'll do some cores and things like that, but this is the first pass from the computer system says, this is the repair, repairs that are needed. And then we'll be doing reclamation on Hillington Drive. And that'll be just about $600,000 in repairs, which is much less than this current year coming up because we had money rolling over from savings we were able to accomplish, especially from getting Blackbrook Road funding from the previous year and the complete streets funding. And then moving on to F Y 26, another audible in here as well. So this whole cluster of roads, Day Street, Barrows, Oakland Bridge, Hayward and Park, were all set for fiscal year 25. But now that the domino effect of moving up Foundry Street, we'd have to bump these as well because we have some 1887 original water mains in this area that we need to replace before we spend significant money on these roads. That would be not a wise investment. Those water mains have held up great, probably some of the better ones we've had in town, but they've definitely outlived their useful life and will replace those prior to our payment plan. And then we also have a mill sanding overlay on Baltic Gaff. And again, that's about $600,000 total in our payment plan. So what that looks like for the three years, that's what we'll be doing over the next three years, is about 2.23 million. And now we get into the, the things you alluded to, Donnie, the cost of all of our items going up and what that looks like. So one way to look at, you know, what we're spending is great and what we've spent is great. But we have to look at what our remaining service life analysis tells us. And basically it tells us we're not spending enough. So every year a road loses one year, one mile of road loses one year of service life. So we have 117 miles of public roads, so we lose 117 years of service life every year. So we have to add in service life to our roadway network. A crack sealing adds two years, reclamation adds 20. So somewhere in between there, when we do our, we did our 1.3 million dollars in pavement management repairs, we only added 40 years of service life to the road, so we lost in net 77 years. So what that tells us is, just on last year's numbers, we need to be targeting 3.8 million dollars a year just to stay even. Now that, on a year-to-year basis, that's not always accurate because some of the repairs are more expensive in some years. We have less crack sealing and less preventive maintenance. So averaging all those over the last, I think we have seven or eight years in here, we should be spending $16,000 a mile, which comes up to 1.9 million dollars a year. And we're not really coming close to that. Going forward, we're looking at 1.1 million dollars in accumulated chapter 90 money, which we can spend next year. But after that, we're probably down to about 600,000. So that is a significant gap and there's a graph here showing, the blue is what we spent since 2015. The green is where that target line needs to be and the red is what we're actually projecting on spending. So there's a significant delta there. And what that's going to lead to is our roadway network declining and, you know, ride quality and our R S R will go down, unfortunately. The reason for that, like you stated, is the buying power, I'm going to skip to that slide, sorry, because we're talking about it. Material costs have continued to go up. See that second bullet here? Since 2012, they've basically been stagnant and that's a 42.6% decrease in funding, maintaining that 200 million dollars statewide in chapter 90 funding. And just as an example, our asphalt cost in 2012 was $63.60 per ton. This year it'll be $105 a ton. And that's a 65% increase over that time. So that's significant concern going forward.
And Dave, I could just pile on to your point and Donnie's point. So MMA has filed some paperwork, some advocacy paperwork with lawmakers regarding this. Governor Haley's new administration has filed a two-year chapter 90 bill, but still level funding this year. The coming two years at 200 million. So despite historic amount of revenue growth on the state level and endless headline coverage of the amount of revenue growth on the state level, we are still looking at into fiscal '24 and '25, unless the House and Senate change this amount, the same actual dollar amount of funding from 2012.
And that's 200 million for 2011?
I mean, for 351 city of the towns around the state, the Mass Municipal Association regularly interviews and surveys engineers, public works departments around the state, even before the inflation of recent years, the number of the actual needs-based number for chapter 90 to actually adequately maintain road systems in the state is closer to 600 million per year. So we are very far astray of that. It's not an accident that, you know, so what you're seeing around the state is we need roughly triple the amount. We wanted to have very, very well-maintained roads. That what the level funded amount translates to at least is roughly 600,000 per year. If that was being more adequately funded, that would be much closer to about 1.9 million, right, not 1.8. So we, for years in 2010s, were borrowing a half million a year, taking advantage of interest being borderline nonexistent for bond issuances by local government. And that was meant to be a stopgap measure, hopefully as state revenues recover from the Great Possession, you know, two financial catastrophes ago, that we would no longer have to deal with. But we made the decision at that time that we couldn't just continue adding a half million every year in debt until the state changed course. Unfortunately, they still have not. So I give a lot of credit to Dave and public works for what they've been able to do. It's all those folks here, including Dave, who do a lot of grant writing. And our legislative delegation, we're able to occasionally get large projects like Blackbrook funded, but it's a difficult situation.
Well, on that note, I'll like good news, let's talk about some of the other projects we have going on. So bright note, the Depot Street project, 12 million dollar reconstruction project is nearing completion. It should be completed this spring into early summer. Basically all that's left is a final coat of asphalt on the roads and sidewalks and some punch lists and grading, you know, minor grading issues. So again, that project's come a long way and we've gotten some really positive feedback about it.
Well, that intersection is fantastic now.
Yeah.
It really makes.
The operations, it operates very well, yep. Elm Street, the signalization, so this was a one we actually started designing initially. Mass D O T wanted us to basically extend the design up and down Washington Street, basically to connect to Union Street. So this is a project in more of, not a signalization project, but a corridor project for Washington Street. And we kind of pushed back with them a little bit, asked them if we could maybe break it out. They actually decided to take over the design, so that actually saves the town a lot. I think we spent just over 300,000 on the design, initial design, but we don't have to spend that anymore going forward. Mass D O T is going to finish that design for us. This is programmed in the federal fiscal '25 tip and the 25% hearing was last spring. This currently has a $7 million construction estimate, so.
Dave, does that, now that DOT to proper design, does it still include connectivity to Union and Washington?
Yes, yep.
And so that, I think, and I hope I'm not overselling, but I think that means there will be sidewalk connectivity from Union and Washington all the way down to Elm Street, right?
Yes, down to Elm Street and a little past Elm Street, I believe they were picking up to Landwater.
Yep.
But yeah, so it's, the connections are improving drastically.
It's going to be great.
So it is, it is a good project, we just didn't want to have to pay for it all ourselves, all that state highway design. And luckily, Mass D O T agree with us and are kicking in for that.
And so the construction phase is estimated in October of '25?
Federal fiscal '25, so I, that's probably.
It's in October '24.
It is, so I don't know where it falls in the, in the year of funding. So the Mass D O T has to do some takings on this as well.
Sure.
So it really hinges on how fast they progress, but usually they're pretty good about trying to get these into advertise in that federal fiscal year. So if it is early, you know, go maybe in '24.
That's great.
So when they found the public hearing on this, I would just recommend to people to join those public hearings. Like I never went to one of them before, but because I live on Elm Street, I was interested in it. And they were talking about bringing the sidewalks just down to the cemetery after Elm Street. And so I said, you know, would it, would it be possible to bring it all the way down to Landwater? It's like another, you know, 100 feet or something. And that's something that they hadn't realized because things changed down there a lot and they agreed to bring it down there. And I was shocked because I didn't think, you know, that public input would really be accepted that quickly. So I would say to people, go to these things if you live in those neighborhoods. And yes, I'm not guaranteeing you're going to get everything you ask for, but there might be some nuances to it that the designers weren't aware of.
That's a great point.
And I'll say even if you don't live in the area, on Foundry Street, when we've ridden our bikes all the way up to the pickleball courts and when we go to Cross right there, it's the most dangerous of the entire seven-mile bike ride is right there. So that's fantastic. And there's been many times I've walked from Landwater across or to Buddy's, like when Landwater shuts down.
Yeah.
50 parents migrate from there over to Buddy's, so it's, that's a huge improvement.
Yeah, this will be a really big improvement.
You'll be at a point where when this is complete, you'll have continuous sidewalk from Union and Washington South to Elm Street, through Elm Street to downtown, down center, to Depot Street. And the next large tip that we're in the early stages of is Foundry Street.
And almost all the way up to the border.
There you go.
Up the border.
And it's really transformative from where we were 10 years ago.
Yeah, so again, the big thing is these, these projects take a long time to design, get approved and get funding for. You know, Depot Street was basically 10 years before construction started. So you want to get these things in, get them early. It does cost money for us to design it, so that's, we utilize chapter 90 funding for that. That's why we generally are showing like 600,000 of our 730,000 allowance right now to maintain some wiggle room for us to progress some of these designs. Luckily on Foundry Street, we were able to get a $225,000 Community Choice Grant to begin the initial preliminary design. And since that time, we've received another $250,000 in Mass Works grants. And we have 339,000 in mitigation funds, which will be going to a town meeting this spring for appropriation that can be used for the design of this project. This is going to be a huge project. It's not that long, but it's, you know, from basically Robert Drive to Depot and Bay Roman. It's a significant project and it's going to really help that east-west corridor, but it includes three bridges. So this will be fairly expensive, right now the initial construction estimate is 15 million dollars.
So this is widening the road impact, putting in a signalization at Quantico and also bike lanes and sidewalks?
Yes, all the amenities that we can fit in here, we will. Mass D O T requires us to do that, so the stock is, you know, the stock answer is sidewalk both sides. We'll have to get a waiver for sidewalk on one side, like we did on Depot Street, but we'll fully, you know, go down that path and try to get as much as we can in here. This will require a significant widening, significant land takings, and there's a lot of environmental issues in here as well. We have weapons very close to us, dams, things like that. So it's a very challenging project, it'll be very expensive, but we've, we're under design now, we have some money to progress the design. We look forward to seeing where this goes.
And I think it's important to call out, you know, some of the mitigation on a lot of these projects that really push them over the edge to get them to be developed faster is mitigation and impacts from new housing that's gone in and really focusing on getting those roads, you know, and, and the connectivity around the housing so that people can walk and, and get to shopping and get to amenities like that, so.
There was an incident last night and, you know, we don't have any details and don't want to speak to it, but right here in this quarter, that potentially, right when this is completed, which is fantastic that we're moving forward the way we are, to think that something like that could be avoided in the future.
And then I'm just going to end on the same concerns, our Eastern Industrial Park, we're not proposing any repairs at this time. We've done some temporary repairs, but all those roads are up for complete repaving. The major cost that actually don't fit into our plan, much more than the 600,000 dollars a year that we have, but we've been holding off on that, trying to wait for Stuart to come in. We don't want to repave those roads and then find out Stuart's coming in. So that is still out there and still to be determined what's going to happen with that. That's just one of the concerns. I know we talked about material costs already, so I can, I can skip that unless anyone wants to beat that horse to death. And that's all I have, any questions or other comments?
I just want to compliment you, David. This kind of information that the public can look at is really important because we do get a lot of questions about, when's my road going to get paved or when are you going to fill the puddles? Or what's happening with water, those kinds of things. This is very helpful to us to be able to say, look, here's, take a look at this, you can see exactly how this is going to proceed and the limitations we have in terms of money coming on chapter 90. So I think it's, it's great, I appreciate it very much.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, David, you had a very thorough, I really, again, the progressive forward thinking and forward engineering and weighing out the cost management analysis of what we're doing today and where we should be, so thank you.
Yeah, it's always hard to hear the hard reality around this and know that we have some major talents in this space, but I appreciate the driven by data, you know, really mindful thinking around how to best tackle those problems and not driven by motion and probably a lot of emails, do you say my needs can already be done or why?
We get it.
Yeah, I was one of them, I didn't know better. But, you know, and then the other piece, like, but you've seen all these projects that really not only increase our connectivity and make our community walkable and more user-friendly, but safety is just a big part of it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to also comment on some of these projects that you do. I know you've rented equipment and your staff has done some of these to save money and to do them quicker or what have you. And having a talented group of people working with you is really, really important. And I just want to give a shout out because when we've done reports in the past and we've looked at staffing levels for the size of the community that we have, the D W always has, you know, I'm going to throw out two for one, like we can double the size of the staff to be competitive. And you do great work with such a lean staff and they all are amazing and do wonderful jobs. So I just want to make sure that they know that this board appreciates that work a lot.
I appreciate that, thank you. Again, my staff is second to none, is very talented and that's why half of these things happen. It's just sheer will of determination, skill, they're excellent. So a lot of these things, highway supervisor, highway foreman, right down the line, all the staff, they're great, so thank you.
So don't let any of them retire.
I'll try not to.
Well, thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
So I have license and permit next, but I think I'm going to skip over that since nobody's here for that. And let's just go right to P I, so we're going to get Walter on the road. You look like you've had a long day, Walter, and out at the school all, all day probably. So this is a discussion about the Blanchett Ames Elementary School, Break Builders Corp., project change order number 11. Want some, Walter?
Yep.
Just reminded to get that to the left.
So change order 11, just going off the memo that was provided to the board. 92% of, 92.3% of the contract time has elapsed, so we're now in at phase two. 31.4% of ordinary contingency will have been expended with the approval of change order 11. And 9.8% of ordinary contingency is held in reserve, no risk pending resolution. So we do have a list of PCOs that make up change order 11. I'll quickly run through them, give a description of them. PCO 73A and 73B, these are the, if you walk around the school, you'll see the seven front canopy entrances. So these did not have originally called for fire protection in them. So what was needed in order to get the fire protection and then the necessary electrical work because it's outside was coring, so that was the first part of the PCO, $1,200. And then the electrical enclosures above that were not shown on the drawing, so we needed to add them to make sure that those spaces could be properly maintained and have the correct coverage. So that was $51,742, so kind of a combination. And it's multiple location, it was multiple locations around the school, but a necessary scope that wasn't bought, that needed to be purchased. PCO 114, music room ceiling cost. A indoor music rooms in order to keep the noise down from the art rooms, which are directly above it. The acoustical ceiling needed to be framed in. It was inadvertently tagged to a trade that does not customarily perform that work and as such was not carried as a cost, so it wasn't, again, not included in the bid. Needed to be framed by a true carpenter, not an acoustic ceiling installer. So that was $34,000 add. That, just so everyone knows, that did start at almost 74,000. That, just so everyone knows, that did start at almost seventy-four thousand. And we were able to negotiate that down to thirty-four. PCO 114A, in that ceiling, in order to get above it, to adjust, to get to any of the mechanicals, access panels needed to be cut in. So, that was also carried in that number. PCO 114A for twenty-two, forty-three. PCO 147 is for the unforeseen structure. I think we've all, we heard about this during the summer, at the end of the summer and before school. It was a big issue or cause for concern, if the school's gonna be ready to open and be finished. It was ready. That work was all tracked on time and materials. That was cleaning out that structure, decommissioning that structure, making sure that it was properly signed off by D E P. So, that structure has been filled with concrete. Piece of it, multiple pieces of it were cut off to make sure that the road could go in because it was too high in a couple of locations. And then the proper paperwork. So, that was eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. PCO 152, plantings at the slip walk outside D building. Believe if you're on the north southeast side of the building, as you come up, what will be in, at the final completion of the project will be the emergency access. That big facade wall right there when you drive in, that's being used for bus turn-in right now to deter people even further from walking down into the mulch. Some additional plantings were called, requested and ultimately put in there to force people to visually see something to turn left as they come out the door. The concrete walkway does turn left. So, we are work, we did get those plantings installed. That was eighteen hundred and eleven dollars.
I had walked on a mulch and I would avoid that. Excellently.
We have your video.
We are, we are also pricing out a fence, a nice split rail fence to further.
That'll prevent the damage.
Prevent. So, something that we do have on the other side of the site. We're working on the price for that. PCO 154 is an additional door at the developmental skills room. This is an add that's gonna take place during April vacation. It's to add a door at this room because of the way the functionality of the building operates, not by code, but because of the functionality and interpretation of the code. So, the doors didn't close one way, the path of egress wouldn't be as long. But because the building is, the way that the fire routes, fire evacuation routes are being utilized in the building, the additional doors needed because the secondary egress is too far from the door that you'd be coming out of in that room. So, if the egress wasn't being utilized that way, we wouldn't need the door. But because the school's utilizing it that way, we're gonna add that door to make sure that all codes are met. That was fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. It is going through, it's right outside the mechanical room, or sorry, right next to the mechanical room. PCO 159 and 159A, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen thousand. These are items that we see pretty much on every jog before the building opens. We walk through with police, fire, DPW, as many people as we can get through the building. And we wanna make sure that the third party, the authority having jurisdiction, which would be the police and fire. If they have any comments, concerns, items that they feel need to be adjusted, we make sure that those items get adjusted because they do ultimately have that final sign-off. Easton Police, Easton Fire have been unbelievable to work with. They've asked for next to nothing on this entire project because their design was so incorporated. Their thoughts were so incorporated into the design. We did have about fifty-eight, forty-eight thousand dollars worth of work that we did need to accomplish in that timeframe. Happy to say that all of those items were able to be worked out. We did start those in like late August, early September as we're walking through the building. We did multiple walks with those groups. But there was items such as additional signage, additional horn strobes, patching different doorways recessed, adding knocks boxes, removing knocks boxes from certain locations. So, there was items that they just wanted to see adjusted to make sure that their responses are gonna be best providing to the students in that building. PCO 160, CAF2 ramp primer for wall graphics. This is a durability thing that we added at those graphics. If anyone has been in, you've seen the Blanche Ains graphics and the words on the walls at the ramp. This is something that wasn't in the specifications, but to add to the durability of these, they put this primer on. It wasn't called for, but in hindsight, we probably would've added that in originally. That was thirty-nine hundred dollars. PCO 172, if anyone has driven by Columbus Ave. The retention pond is ninety-nine percent complete finally at that intersection of Washington and Columbus and the entry over to EMS and the connector road. Trench needed to be dug across the road in order to get the drain line from that retention pond tied back in. We do need to drop the structure in to make sure it's properly installed. But right now, it's temporarily installed outside of the roadway. So, right now, we are not gonna need to go back into the road at this time. But we did trench all the way across the road. We got the pipe in, we got the connection done at the top, which is up near the intersection itself.
Did you say Washington and Columbus?
Is that Washington and Columbus? Is that Washington? Comes into Columbus right there or is it not Washington?
Oh, I think it's Western.
Western, sorry. Sorry. Western.
Was confused.
W, yeah. Thirty-eight, that was thirty-eight thousand. PCO 174 was door sweeps and drip caps. Some locations at the vestibules did not call for door sweeps and drip caps. And we did get, ordered those and get break, did get those put on. You'll see them preventing water, preventing wind to getting into those vestibules. PCO 175 was a response to an RFI for car door control changes. Believe this is the hardware and, I'm sorry, the HVAC for these rooms, they needed to be changed, what was gonna serve them. That was twenty-one hundred, seventy dollars. PCO 176 is the disposal of the Parkview contents. So, there was some additional items that did need to be thrown away at Parkview. Loose items that we didn't account, that weren't accounted for. A lot of loose trash material. It was a full day of, one full day of a crew for the demolition contractor and the abatement contractor. I think it was eight, nine, nine or ten guys for eight hours. So, they got everything out of the building and into dumpsters and were able to get that out of there for us. So, that was a really big, a really good use of money right there. For scope that wasn't bought, I mean, really scope that is hard to foresee as you walk through a building, you don't know what people are gonna leave. It's next to impossible, and they got it done very quickly for us. PCO 176A, sorry. The first one was the disposal of those contents. The second one was the removal of the contents. So, the first one was the disposal of everything loose inside of the building. And the second one is the time for those workers. So, ten workers for one day. PCO 177 was the EMR door tagging. There were four, I believe, four doors that needed a rating of sixty minute, ninety minute fire rated doors. The tags were only called for forty-five. So, we had them, we had the company, they actually, they used to fly, they used to just send you the tags to put on. You actually, they actually had to come to the site, inspect the door, even though they've already seen it and put the tag on it. They had to come back up to the site and change the tags on the doors.
Why was it forty-five or could be changed to ninety?
Uh, sorry. It was, they were tagged as ninety, but they needed, the way the assembly works, the assembly doesn't, everything around the door wasn't meeting the ninety. It doesn't meet the ninety. So, it's not really a ninety. They just had it marked wrong. It's supposed to be a, I believe they're supposed to be sixty. So, the tag rating was actually coming down because it was improper for what it was. So, it was a little bit of a.
So, going the other way. It sounded like you were saying, tag forty-five, they came in and made it ninety, but it was ninety, they dropped it down to sixty.
I believe it's ninety down to sixty. I'll have to double check on which way they went, I'm sorry, on which rating they ended up at. They are correct now for the fire code. And it was a little bit of a hectic scare. We, or not hectic scare, but a little bit of a hectic time. We were trying to get them out. They actually had to fly out, I believe, from the Midwest to do it. So, they've been signed off by the third-party fire door inspector and then also by the fire department. I just don't have the ratings off the top of my head right now. PCO 180 was the flexible learning visual display units. One second. So, these were changes to items that were carried in the bid, but we're not gonna work for the functionality of the school. So, they were changed from a home so, they called for the magnetic marker board with wood trim, but they were changed to the tackable homosophobe panel. And then we also had extra marker boards. Those ended up staying with the school. So, there's a little bit of added stock for marker boards, which is nice to see as well. But that was eighty-four hundred dollars. PCO 185 was an item that the town would've needed to pay as a utility bill for a disconnect that in order to move the demolition process as fast as we could, Break Builders paid it. So, it's really just crediting them to back the disconnect cost for that piece. PCO 193 is a credit for custodial storage, coverage hours. So, while Break Builders have been working in the building due to schedule, due to completion times, they asked if they could pay for custodial coverage from the school. And so, they're crediting back the coverage hours for those guys, which is nice to see there. It's twenty, a credit of twenty-five hundred dollars. PCO 197 is for security measures. This was a executive session at the building committee level. It was eighty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. That has been, that has been, is on order and will be completed. And then PCO 198 was a kitchen, kitchen backflow and mixing valve at the inside of the kitchen. The backflow is for the soap dispenser units. So, typically, we don't install those because we need to see what soap dispenser's gonna be used, who the supplier is. So, they're not installed until after. We know that they need to go in, but we always need to do them after to make sure that the correct backflow's going on and it matches up with the soap dispensing unit that's in there. And then the mixing valve, because the kitchen supply of water needs to be so hot, that whole area, the hand wash sinks were extremely hot. So, they needed the mixing valve put in, the two hand washing sinks in order to have better temperature for the staff in there. Long one tonight, sorry about that. But that is Change Order Four, in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand, seven ninety-eight.
So, these bring the owner contingency. The expanded amount of the owner contingency is at thirty-one point four percent with these changes. But you know that there's nine point eight percent of the owner contingency held in reserve for known risk pending resolution. So, we know there's probably gonna be another close to ten percent. So, it's about forty-one percent expended for all practical purposes. So, we're still quite under budget.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
How close do you, you know, I know you don't have a metric ball, but typically, are we in good shape or do you?
We're in very good shape.
Okay.
In very good shape, yeah. We have fifty, I believe it's fifty percent of, so this is thirty-one, but it's fifty-one percent of hard cost contingency, which is construction. And then nearly all of the soft cost contingency. I believe we took nine hundred out of that, out of the two point one. So, we're in very good shape with all of the contingencies. And then on top of that, if everyone at home does not remember, the project was also ten million dollars under budget, just on the bid from the general contractor.
Right.
So, some of that was utilized for the wastewater treatment plant, about one point four, about one point five million of that ten, or ten plus. So, there are, there's a large amount of contingency still available.
I think it's just that when you get to the end of any project or for anybody who's built a house or remodeled, you have all these, you know, unanticipated expenses at the end or anticipated, but when they all come in at once, it's kinda like.
Anticipated, but I don't know. Yeah, no, no, no. And they're still rolling in. We're still working through quite a bit of them. We expect to be back here again and again after that and probably again after that.
Well, I know one of the things that's very valuable about what you do is that you negotiate some of these things because some of them, you know, might not necessarily be at base, things that were oversights or whatever. Sometimes there's disagreement about who, you know, who's responsible for them. And you've done a really good job at getting the best negotiation for the town. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, I would just say, and I know you mentioned one here that you're signaling, like, say, a forty thousand dollar reduction. But there's ones that we often don't see too because you guys have gone back and pushed back. So, there's those items that we don't even do the credit for because it's just off on here as a reduction. Is the security film one we'd rather not entertain questions on? Because of the premise security standpoint? Thank you. It's on media. Thanks, Walter.
Yep.
Craig?
No, just thank you very much, Wahad Bill. We were expecting something else from you.
So, I would take a vote to accept the change order. What number was that?
Change Order 11.
Change Order 11 for the Valenciennes Elementary School.
So, who, Fager?
Second.
Fager and Stevens and all in favor? You can handle it. Excellent. So, next is discussion and vote contract awards creative office resources, Robert H. Lord Company, WB Mason and Valley Communications Systems for furniture fixtures and equipment and information technology for the Valenciennes Elementary School.
So, I'll hit each one of these. Creative Office Pavilion has two. The first is for USB couplers at the conference room tables. So, if anyone has been into the conference room, they have very similar to the floor boxes that you guys see. They have power, USB, HDMI, all the connections in the table. When you order the table, it actually comes with two or three of them. So, we needed to make sure that those were fully outfitted. These are additional pieces at those locations for nineteen hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The second COP was for the additional desk at the, at the central admin office. They did add a staff person, so we ordered another desk for that staff number. It is quite a ways out because all the furniture is quite a ways out, unfortunately. But we've got that on order. And that person has a temporary desk right now, so. But this will match everything that's in there. So, you won't have a piece of furniture just sticking out that looks like a sore thumb. RH Lord, additional cafeteria tables. This is, I believe, nine additional cafeteria tables. They are going to fit in the main cafeteria. The original idea was that the CAF1 was gonna be utilized by the kindergarten and pre-k, and it is. And it's actually having a little bit of overlap. So, some of those tables are actually being used. But that area is being used more than they thought it would be during those lunchtimes. So, they do need those nine additional tables. That is nine thousand dollars. Those were basically the same price as the ones we bought previously. Again, those have a long lead time. WB Mason, additional swing option items. This is only three hundred and fifty-six dollars. These were three pieces that go in the OTPT rooms to outfit the swings in there. So, there's, I believe, three or four different versions of the swing that you can use. There's a basket, a bucket, a ball, hooks. And it's really just to make sure that they have everything that they need in there. They thought the original package came with those. And they were able to find, when they got there, they found that they didn't. So, we were able to get those on order. And then the last one is two additional phones. Says, added trailers, two additional phones hookup and setup at those locations. So, they're the high-end phones that have all the security on them as well. And that is from Valley Communications. So, those are the four, five FFNE items that we have tonight.
Does that use up the rest of the budget of that?
Does not. It remains in positive with the approval of, what would be left would be fourteen thousand, one twenty. And we know that we have one more item that we're negotiating. We're gonna be bringing it to the technical review committee on Wednesday. And that's for a chair, chair change. Some of the chairs are not, not working as well as they had hoped. So, we're gonna be reviewing that. We have a very great, a very great deal that our vendor, our consultant has negotiated with the manufacturer, not even through the vendor. So, we've gone directly to the source and they're willing to work with the school and the town and get a good swap and a fair price for those chairs. We also are working on the, so that's one piece of furniture. And then the only other piece of technology that we're working on is the integration of the CAF2 projector. So, we need to be able to find a way to wire that. It's a hard-wire projector that's gonna be going near the back of the ramp. Was gonna go in the ceiling. Unfortunately, the projector we had purchased and really any projector we had was not gonna stick down far enough. We weren't gonna be able to get by the beams properly. There was gonna be an unsightly item sticking down from the ceiling. So, we were able to get it under the ramp. But we need to be able to figure out how to get the cabling back from that ramp through the wall, all the way back to the back of the stage. So, we're working with the electrician right now. So, you won't see it through this, that piece through this budget, but you will see the wiring of that. So, that might be a little confusing. The electrician is going to find a pathway and put a conduit in or upholstering. The integration of this projector. The integration of this projector would be then setting that up, pulling the actual HDMI cable through that conduit or the string.
Okay.
So those are the two items we're tracking for FFNE IT at this point in time that are remaining open. We don't foresee anything other than that, but we'll, we'll let you know if we hear anything from anyone.
All right, great. Any questions? All right, thank you very much for the, the precision and detail of these. If somebody wants to make a motion to award the change orders for the contracts as noted in the agenda.
So moved, second.
Arjun Stevens, all in favor? You name it. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Walter.
We save tomorrow, Walter. We'll do it at some point.
Yeah.
Do you want to go to the general obligation one?
Yes, I think we're back on track then, so I.
I'll go back to license and firm. I'll get everybody out of.
So Linda comes up, we are requesting board to approve the issuance of roughly eleven and a half million borrowing authorizations. These are previously approved capital items that have been approved by town meeting. I will refer to Linda to speak to the details of the actual bond sale, which occurred last week. I just do want to highlight for the board, although there's no action required, that as part of our standard process for bond issuance, we have Moody's do a credit rating for the town. We've included their press release and credit profile in the board's packet. We'll always put that on there as well. They reaffirmed our strong AA three bond rating. They cited the town's strong financial management, borrowing reserve balances, and the strong residential economy. This is the first bond rating that has included what they're calling Moody's ESG factors, which is environmental, social, and government, governance factors that impact credit, where they take a broader view at environmental threats and local policy responses to that, social dynamics of the community, as well as your governance structure and competency, and incorporate that as a, basically a multiplier or detractor into your rating. And we received a neutral, neutral, and positive on those, with a positive specifically highlighting the town's governance profile, its strong transparency and disclosure practices, timely budgeting and auditing, and strong management and policy credibility. So those are always good things to highlight. So just wanted to point that out, and over to you, Linda.
Okay. Hello, thank you for being here, Linda. Thank you. So we're a little bit earlier. This is our annual borrowing, a little bit earlier this year. We're still trying to stay ahead of the rate hikes that we anticipate are coming down the line with the Federal Reserve meeting in, well, they did meet in February, and then they will be meeting again in March, and probably again. But, so the financial advisors have suggested that we just borrow as much as we possibly can, remembering that you don't want to borrow too much because you can't borrow it before you have actually not expended it, but you have to spend it within a certain period of time. So the memo that I wrote to you a little while ago before the sale of the bonds, you can see that we're coming to the end of some big projects, including the school project. But as those monies are being expended and we are sure that the, we're going to meet the time requirements to spend the money, then we permanently finance the, the money with bonds. This round, we do also have a ten million dollar bond anticipation note, which is temporary financing. That would include five million for the early elementary school, which is essentially MSBA is going to hold back via the last five percent of our, of our funding until everything is done. But we're spending the money in the meantime, and it's a significant amount of money. So we're just going to put that in temporary financing. We may or may not rule it over depending upon how the school is going and whether or not we should bond that. And then for the P-FAS treatment facilities, we wanted to be sure we couldn't get mass clean water trust financing for any of that project. So instead of bonding five million of that, we're just putting that in temporary financing with the, with the ban. So, so that was that. So lots of, well, we had good competition for the bonds and the ban. Seven bidders on the bond offering, five bidders on the ban offering. We've got true interest cost on the bonds of three point, three point eight, was it? Sorry, three point, oh, I don't have it on that. Three point six three, sorry. And on the ban, there was a net interest cost of three point three two. So not too bad. The three point six three is actually a little bit lower than last year's bond sold for. So, you know, I think we're sort of maintaining a good, a good, I think our, our strategy is working anyways, so we're not getting into our interest rates. The bonds did include premiums of more than seven hundred thousand dollars, so that helps to reduce the cost to us in the end at all. As Connaught did suggest, we have the AA three rating through Moody's, and a mid-one rating for the ban. The mid-one rating is the best rating that you can get. Again, it just is a function of how strong Easton is on all sorts of different levels. There's many documents that need to be signed, the twenty-one, you know, the twenty bonds in one ban, along with a bunch of others, if you would, if we could do that.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I believe there is a specific motion.
Right here.
Incorporated.
Does, does Craig have to read all the detail of the year and the amounts?
No, sure.
Personally, there's a.
I read that, I said, there's no way.
I was going to say, sit back.
Guess we're not doing a capital plan.
So I move to adopt the votes prepared by the bond council in connection with the town's ten million nine hundred thirty thousand dollar general obligation bond and ten million dollar bond anticipation note, both dated March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and incorporate the text of the vote of the select board into the minutes of this meeting.
So that's Bajra and Stevens, all in favor? You name it. Excellent. Thank you, Linda. We know that you put a great deal of work out, you know, a lot of this has been over my head for the years. I'm finally starting to catch on and, and understand it a little bit better. So I'm glad we have smart people like you that make this stuff happen. And, you know, the bond, the bond rating is so important to us, and it has been for all the boards that I've worked with. Even a little fluctuation in that can mean millions of dollars of interest that we have to pay, so.
Yes, it does. There's a lot of hard work all around.
Yeah, well, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. All right. Next, we have a discussion and vote acceptance of easement at Boundary Street, Sawmill Village. Stephanie, thanks for being here. Come on in.
Glad to be here. So I heard David Field talking, just, or just mentioning the mitigation that was part of the Sawmill project that is going to help with the roadway improvements at Boundary Street. Part of that mitigation agreement, mitigation payments included the construction of intersection improvements at Boundary and Paquana Cat Avenue. And what you have before you tonight is a grant of easement from the developer, providing the permanent easements that are going to allow for that roadway improvement to move forward. So you are being asked to sign that agreement.
So we, we need to vote to accept the easement.
Yes. And this was authorized, oh, I'm sorry, this was authorized, the board is authorized to do so at annual town meeting this past May.
Any questions? Nope. This is great. This gets us one step closer to the intersectional program. Excellent. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the easement at Boundary Street, Sawmill Village LLC?
So moved, second.
Bajra and Stevens, all in favor? You name it. And the next one is item ten, the contract award for BSC Group Design Services for the redevelopment of Swift's Park.
So after being appointed by the select board last November, the Swift's Park Steering Committee met many times over the course of last winter, spring, and summer. They developed the goals for the rehabilitation of the park and rededication, primarily, and I'm going to read this for everyone, what they feel the goal should be based on their charge redeveloping the park to memorialize the first responders and victims of the nineteen eighteen, I have no, twenty-three.
I was going to call you, say that. It's like.
I did correct this. I caught it after the package, the packet went out. The nineteen eighteen influenza pandemic and the COVID nineteen twenty pandemic. So the goal is memorialization of the individuals acting as frontline responders during those two pandemics, recognition of the Furnace Village District as an important early industrial center, and how the industry contributed to the growth and development of the district, weaving in the occurrence of the pandemics with this significant industrial, residential, and agricultural past. Centrally situated, accessible neighborhood park that provides respite to residents and passersby, and low maintenance and upkeep without sacrificing quality and aesthetics. And everyone that, on the committee, people that we've talked to sees this as just another added asset to that whole area, with the new zoning, the new development that's going on in the roadway improvements. So over the fall, we went out with a request for proposals for a design consultant to develop the concept plans for the park, working with the public, conducting some public outreach. And that was broken into two phases. Phase one, phase two will be development of the construction documents and bid documents so that we can then go out to bid. This phase one is being funded through an administration fund, CPA administration funds, and through consulting funds in the planning department budget. And we have, are seeking the remaining funds of thirty-five thousand dollars through a CPA grant application that has been approved or voted in support of by the Community Preservation Committee and is expected to go to town in the fall. The award of the contract is being made to BSC Group.
Excellent. Any comments or questions?
I, I was part of the group, or I am part of the group, and it was a very extensive discussion about the different possible vendors, and this group was unanimously chosen by the, by the committee.
Excellent. Thanks for serving on that break. All right, if there's no other questions, I would take a motion to award the contract to BSC Group for the Design Services for the Redevelopment of Swift's Park.
So moved, Bajra.
Second.
Bajra and Stevens, all in favor? You name it. Excellent. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, next, we are, item eleven, vote to authorize town administrator Connor to decide the electricity supply contract.
Sure, fun to answer. And I guess here, there's a brief memo in the packet outlining the nation's request by law sources that we had very good lock to entry into multi-year electricity supply contracts for municipal government years ago, where we were paying roughly eight or nine cents per kilowatt hour, which feels like a very, very, very distant past. Those contracts end this December, and Wendy, in part her ongoing responsibility, stays in close contact with energy consultants and keeps an eye on the energy markets. And thankfully, things have improved from last year, and Wendy thought it was time to come in and get a kind of necessary flexible authorization for me to execute these contracts because you have to do so based on that day's rates, and you can't post forty-eight hours in advance with that circumstance. So Wendy, I know you would like to add to it, there's some, some figures included in Wendy's memo, and I think Wendy, do you, you have some rough estimates of what this looks like financially for us?
So right now, we're paying eight point eight four cents per kilowatt. Prices now are more like twelve cents a kilowatt. They were as high though as fourteen cents, so they have, they definitely have come down. What that basically translates to us is it's going to cost above two hundred thousand dollars more a year for electricity versus the current contract that we have. But there is some good news, and the good news is that because we have several net metering projects, we have been able to accumulate a significant amount of credits on our utility bills from those, which we can then apply. In fact, working with a consultant now, we're looking at reallocating those credits. We're kind of waiting for the, the Blanching School to really fully come online and see what those electricity costs are going to be. And we can then apply some of those credits to that. And we're also looking at what our net metering options are for future projects on the school. That will help offset those costs.
Any questions? You've had a pretty good track record of, of success on this, so I'm sure that all the data and the research that you've done on this helps certainly guide you in that decision, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are going to vote to authorize Connor to supply the electricity supply contract based on rates that you have to get that day, so.
I would just ask that the motion include that the term be up to three years? That, that gives us some flexibility. You can get a better rate for the longer term.
Okay. All right, great.
So, so we move that Connor has the authority to sign contracts for up to three years, or three years?
Yes, please.
For the electric rates for, for the town.
Second.
So it's Bajra and Stevens, all in favor? You name it. Excellent. Thank you, Linda.
Thanks, Wendy.
Next, we have the discussion and vote for renewal of the license agreement with the Easton Chamber of Commerce for Fifty Main Street, which is called the Cape House.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So attached to the board's consideration in your pack is a draft letter requesting renewal of the existing license agreement that the town has with the Easton Chamber of Commerce themselves, a lessie of the Cape House from Shovel Works for use for the Shovel Town Cultural District space. This has been being used, I believe, since two thousand and fourteen. The current license between the town and the chamber expires this month, and this would add another three years to it. It's been a great relationship, and it creates great space for local artists. This extension also includes the ability for the Shovel Town Cultural District liaison, which part of a staff person, to share some of that space in the event of there's physical office space required with the Chamber of Commerce, who also use it as their physical meeting location. So there's no cost to the town for this. We recommend the board's renewal, and I apologize for it's a very lengthy motion in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions, or Dottie certainly can speak to as well in her role as chair of the cultural district.
Well, it is a great partnership, and I just want, I'm going to give a little pitch for the art gallery. So we do have local artists in the art gallery that is in that building, and it's open Saturday ten to four and Sunday twelve to three. Features paintings, jewelry, wood turnings, handmade cards, baskets, and stained glass. Local artists display their work at the gallery and then also at the Ames Free Library across the street. The artwork is available for purchase. Cash and checks are accepted. Other methods of payment may be arranged directly with the artist. And thank you for supporting our local artists and follow them on Facebook at @Art Matters. And we have some really interesting artists and their artwork. And again, it's not just paintings, it's photography and, and physical products like stained glass and really, really nice things. So if you get a chance to go in there, go in and then also walk down the street to the library and check that out, and then go have some lunch at, or breakfast at the Farmer's Daughter, and dinner at La Cucina, and make your way around the whole circuit there. And don't forget the Shovel Town Brewery. So we have a whole map of the gallery if anybody's interested. How's that for?
Good.
Shame it as well.
That's a good bet, sure.
All right, Craig. A motion that the town of Easton Select Board hereby approves the execution and delivery of the renewal license made by and between Easton Chamber of Commerce, Inc., and the town. Select Board finds that the foregoing document is in the public interest and the best interest of the town of Easton, authorizes the chair of the select board to execute the delivery renewal license, and authorizes the chair of the select board. renewal license, and authorizes the Chair of the Select Board to execute and deliver such other certificates and documents as the Chair reasonably determines to be necessary or convenient to effectuate the renewal license and the license covenants and promises contemplated thereby. The renewal shall be subject to such non-material and/or administrative changes as are deemed necessary in the public interest and in the best interest of the Town of Easton by the Chair of the Select Board. I must have put together my own term.
So that a motion?
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stebbins, all in favor? Yeah, excellent. Thank you, Craig. All right, next is the Assistant Town Administrator for an update and vote on the approval of the new National Opioid Settlement Subdivision Participation Agreements with Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. Michael.
Thank you. So for the board's benefit, the public's benefit, as the board may be aware, in 2018, you voted to join a mass tort litigation, working with the Massachusetts opioid litigation attorneys, also known as MOLA, which is a consortium of local and national law firms. The MOLA litigation was brought on behalf of tax creators of Massachusetts, and municipalities intending recovery monetary damages from pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors for the role in the very devastating opioid epidemic. And 2021, you voted to approve settlement agreements with the three largest opioid distributors, as well as the opioid maker Johnson and Johnson's for their role in the epidemic. And as part of those agreements, will receive almost 1.2 million over 17 years, and that money has already started to roll in. In closing the packet tonight, are five new settlement participation agreements for your consideration, as Dottie mentioned, with drug makers Teva and Legren, and drug dispensers CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. This second batch of agreements, Easton is expected to receive just shy of $1 million over 15 years. The Massachusetts and National Opioid Litigation Attorneys, the Massachusetts Attorney General and our own town council recommends your approval, and if you wish to do so, there is a suggested motion, which will give the Town Administrator the authorization to sign the forms, which will be done with a trial.
Any comments or questions? So this money needs to be used for certain purposes?
That's right. So it's for opioid-related, so recovery, prevention, things of that nature.
Okay, excellent. All right, Craig?
So I move to approve the new National Opioid Settlement Subdivision Participation Agreement with Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart, as presented, and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the participation forms.
One second.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stebbins, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. So before we go to the Town Administrator presentation, I'm just gonna go back really quickly to the one-day licenses and permits, and then take the resignation, and then we can just really focus on Connor's last two items. So the first one-day liquor license is Stonehill College Women's Basketball Mainway at the Salivier Ames Sports Complex, 320 Washington Street, March 24, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. A police detail is not required for that event. Can I give a motion?
So moved, Roger. Second.
Bodger and Stebbins, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, Stonehill Women's Basketball Fundraisers, also at Stonehill College Salivier Ames Sports Complex, 320 Washington Street, March 25, 2023, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Eastern police detail is not required for this event.
So moved, Roger. Second.
Bodger and Stebbins, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, the Easton Lions Club Celebration of Easton Community Service Auctions, Stonehill College at the Batik, 320 Washington Street. That's gonna be on May 13, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And an eastern police detail is not required for that event either.
So moved, Roger. Second.
Bodger and Stebbins, all in favor? Unanimous. I will just throw in a little bit of a footnote on that for the Lions Celebration of Easton. Watch for that on their social media. They are looking for people that will buy tickets to go to the event, and also sponsors, if anybody would like a sponsorship opportunity. Next, Land Water Farm Pizza Nights, 215 Washington Street, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. There's five licenses, May 26, June 16, July 28, August 25, and September 15. These are scheduled on Friday nights, and an eastern police detail is not required for these events.
So moved, Roger. Second.
Bodger and Stebbins, all in favor? Unanimous. And a little plug for that, those are really fun events. Make sure to put those on your calendar and get there with a family. All right, and then one other thing, the accepted item 16 is the acceptance of resignation from Phyllis De La Richelaye, from the Easton Town Cultural District Management Partnership Team. Her term expires June 30 of 2023. So Phyllis was a great contributor to that committee, and I just wanna thank her for her service, and we accept her resignation with regret. So I'll take a motion, a second, and that'll be a roll call vote.
So I'll move, Roger. Second.
Bodger and Stebbins?
So Stacy De La Richelaye?
Very good.
Apologize for probably.
Stebbins, De La Richelaye.
And Full Genetti, De La Richelaye.
Roger, De La Richelaye.
All right, so now we just have the other two items from you, Connor.
So thank you, Dottie.
Does anybody need a break for a couple of minutes? I don't wanna start, Jamie just had to step out for a second, so let's just give him a break. I don't want to miss a minute of the incoming preliminary operating budget.
I think it's gonna allow, because you have one.
A lot of work goes.
Do we have to wait?
I don't think so.
I'll tell you when it kicks off.
Oh, you can see it, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
I didn't know it was on a mute, though, so that's good.
Yeah.
But I can't hear.
And we really should get a sign at the door for our guests. There are room breaks.
I mentioned it before, but we should have something on the front of the table. Awesome. All right, thank you, everyone, and welcome back. Sometimes rushing right from work to the meeting, you need a little bit of a break in the middle there, so.
Yes.
Connor, thanks for teeing up the fiscal 2024 preliminary operating budget.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. It's been a while since I've been sitting at this table on the side of a room. I'll try to navigate this the best I can. So for anyone watching at home, I'm Connor Reed, the Town Administrator here. This is the first cut at the budget for the fiscal year coming this July, which is fiscal year 2024. Just a really 10,000-foot view for a coming fiscal year. This will be our fourth budget cycle since COVID-19 arrived in the United States along with its economic disruption. The town and public schools have taken great care, working with our elected leadership as well as voters and our department staff to weather the financial storm and rebuild our operations from some cuts in 2021 in a sustainable way. We're in a relatively strange time economically, where there are factors on the positive side of the ledger that are traditionally associated with a strong economy, such as lower unemployment, strong consumer spending, and a significant amount of federal and state investments in revenue growth alongside, more simply put, bad indicators like persistent inflation and rising rates of inflation. We touched on our bond issuance. So it kind of just underscores that we're in strange times to be doing the more routine work of budget building. Despite that, some of our longstanding challenges that everyone on the board is quite familiar with at this point, including having a structural revenue deficit driven by underfunding of state revenue to Easton, continues and dims our overall revenue outlook. And where we stand today is a preliminary fiscal 24 general fund budget, where our expense requests are $95,682,000, which is in excess of our preliminary revenue forecast of $94,182,000. So we're starting with a preliminary deficit of about 1.5 million. Heading into fiscal 24, beyond just the work we have to do every year to get to a balanced budget, I really think that this will be worked back on as the beginning of what will probably be a three to five-year transition period from, for lack of a better term, the COVID-19 budget era, where significant federal and state relief sources were available to municipal governments and school districts, to a new post-pandemic baseline where those funding sources are no longer available to be used. I think as we head into that, reviewing some of the steps we've undertaken during the past 10 years, but particularly during the past three to five, to bolster our financial position is helpful. So following deep cuts to our operating budgets from town and school in fiscal 21, when COVID first arrived, we've worked really diligently to cautiously rebuild those service levels and our operating positions while balancing our long-term financial position and minimizing the creation of financial cliffs where we can. I think so far that we've been successful. We have made some really important progress in service delivery in some key areas, including universal, tuition-free, full-day kindergarten, for regionalization, 911 dispatch for Easton, Foxborough, Mansfield, and Norton, which has improved our emergency response at roughly half of the annual cost. We have added to public works on the engineering and water treatment side to manage a growing capital portfolio that includes more than 25 million in water treatment plants, including PFOS treatment plants. We formalized a relationship that was leaned on so heavily during the COVID-19 pandemic between Emergency Medical Services of the Fire Department and our Public Health Department with what's called mobile integrated medicine, also known as community paramedicine, to permanently and proactively have that collaboration programming for the health needs of the community, and have recently added to that with the Community Mental Health Liaison, who began last week, working between health, EMS, and police. The schools are now at the point of having a fully funded in district fed program. The schools also expanded summer school and tutoring along with making available various interventionists and specialists to address learning loss from remote learning and the worst of the pandemic. In addition to these gains, we've been very fortunate to work with a really good group of unions and employees here in Easton. So towns and schools, primarily, you know, we're talking about an operating budget with, you know, dollars and cents, but we, at the end of the day, we provide services to tens of thousands of people of all ages, primarily through human services. Our budgets are overwhelmingly composed of the costs of employing individuals to serve the public in a pretty dizzying and spectacular number of ways. And so as a result of that, the largest driver of costs in areas of opportunity are personnel. Almost all of those employees are governed by collective bargaining agreements, and our unions are and were and remain key partners in the financial health of the community. And during the pandemic in particular, they really stepped up and worked collaboratively with us to keep Easton strong. There was a variety of wage concessions that unions agreed to, giving up previously negotiated raises that they have in good faith bargained over to minimize layoffs of other employees and service reductions, moving into the future despite headline-grabbing inflation and state revenue growth. Our labor unions on the town side have agreed to more conservative cost of living packages between 2% and 2.5% annually. And then, of course, the actual work that these employees did on the front line across all departments, collaborating on the pandemic response, ranging from drive-through testing centers and school vaccine clinics. The structural revenue deficit that we have long had challenges our operating position. It also cascades into suboptimal capital investment capability, which we touched on a little bit tonight through discussing the pavement management plan. This in turn increases the importance of aggressive grant writing, mitigation negotiations, and management of those funds to launch infrastructure repairs and investments necessary to maintain a strong and growing property tax base in a thriving economy. So whether it's building new sewers, improving multimodal transportation, investing in CIVR education facilities, all of these are investments that keep Easton strong despite some structural challenges that we have, while making it an attractive community for existing residents and new members to move in, therefore continuing to promote property values. Some really important examples here, again, of not only community investments, but ones which we were able to leverage tens of millions, I think on this more than 50 million, in state or federal funds not coming from local property taxes, include the Blanchett Ames Elementary School, Five Corner Sewer, the Depot Street tip, the PFOS treatment plants, and working really with all of our colleagues in Bristol County, the American Rescue Plan Act, that we all kind of shorthand as ARPA. When that first came out, because of the kind of oddities of how government in Massachusetts works, it was an open question on whether or not cities and towns like Easton and folks in Bristol, Norfolk, Plymouth County would receive roughly $2 out of every $3 allocated to the community here by the federal government. And Easton was a keen leader in that regional effort, working collaboratively with Bristol County to make sure that we unlock funding potential for us to go from roughly 2.6 to over 7 million, and for 100 million of county-managed financial funds to be made available to our neighbors throughout Bristol County, which is really critical. These funds have been used for any number of things, including revenue replacement, direct financial aid to our residents, learning loss interventionists, HVAC improvements, as well as mental health services to the community. So that's been incredibly important.
So just, I just wanna pause for one second. When you talk about the collaboration with Bristol County and that Easton was a leader, I wanna be very specific that Connor, you were the leader on that, and I wanna call that out because it's really important. When we first started talking with the county, the other communities really didn't even know which direction we were going in, and you got together with some of the other managers, got everybody to come to the meetings. A lot of people don't even, we, actually, you called for the meeting and asked the commissioners to meet with the cities and towns. A lot of the advisory board meetings that I go to, many communities don't even go to it. So you brought a lot of awareness to it, a lot of education, and I think that you and your relationship with the commissioners was really important to help them understand from our perspective what the communities needed. So I, you're, you're, you know, you're not gonna be the one who says it, so I just wanted to, it's very important that people know that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It was, you know, I think the day the law was signed by President Biden, I started reading through it and said, we need to start this conversation, and the commissioners too, not, a knock of them, said, well, no one is coming to this, to meetings asking for this, we have time. And I'm, many things, but patient is not usually the first descriptive word to jump to the top of the list, so we worked that out, and we got a good product.
One of my favorite parts was when one of the commissioners says, we're gonna have to have the attorneys look and draft something up, and you said, I've taken the liberty of having our attorney. So you were very well prepared for this meeting.
I, I tried. I try. It's my job, but thank you. So some other areas of improvement we've made despite these challenges. Easton's a minimum aid community. I'm going to touch on what that means a little bit more in some later slides. But basically, we struggle every year to adequately fund our necessary operations due to marginal growth in state revenue as a result of a complex education funding formula. And so with the exception of last fiscal year, where it was doubled from $30 of new revenue per student to 60, we usually receive $30 new dollars of funding from the state per year, per pupil. And what that translates into is approximately $100,000 of new revenue for Easton Public Schools, which last year cost $45 million to operate. So that's less than one quarter of one single percent, which is not sufficient. So this reality that we face necessitates that we very, very carefully manage our reserve funds to offset revenue shortfalls in tighter times. We have made exceptional progress in this area due to strong leadership across elected boards, as well as really effective and conservative budget management by our department heads and a lot of employees. We talked about Public Works tonight. They're a pretty great example, punching above their weight despite having fewer colleagues alongside them than similar communities. So back in 2016, recognizing the structural revenue deficit that we had and a failed attempt at an operating override to fix it, this board adopted a variety of financial management guidelines, since which time we've reduced our reliance on local reserves and the operating budget by 50%. We've met our commitment of transferring a quarter of our free cash each year into stabilization. We've grown that stabilization fund from about $1.6 million to its current balance of $5.7 million, which is the highest it's been ever in real terms, but also as a percentage of what our operating obligations are. We've improved that reserve ratio, which is your free cash and stabilization, from about 5.9% to over 10%. And we've also adopted a variety of special purpose reserve accounts that Town Meeting authorizes on the front end and puts money into, so there's still that oversight. But then are managed by various typically elected boards, like the Select Board Finance Committee or the School Committee, to provide important pressure release valves that can be turned around quickly for things like unanticipated SED costs, unanticipated long-term injuries on duties, and things of that nature to reduce the operating impact of unanticipated mid-year expense spikes. Despite all of our strengths noted on those slides, the consistent underfunding of state aid forces a growing reliance by the town every year on property taxes to fill the gap that would otherwise be filled with growth of state revenue. So this results in what can often be a frustrating reality for our residents that I'm sure members of the board hear. I know I hear, where local taxes increase every year reliably, while depending on the year and what we're facing in the broader economy or with unfulfilled aid services tread water or sometimes even get cut. And so it's understandable that somebody who doesn't watch meetings like this for fun would look at that and say, what is going on here? I'm paying more every year, and yet I go to a meeting when I have time, and I hear people say there's not enough money. That can be very frustrating. And so outside of trying to make sure that we're doing the best we can and putting out the kind of most efficient product we can with the money that we receive, we've also really, I think, made a lot of progress, particularly since seeking and receiving the approval for the override for the new school, to find ways to not just spend money well, but actually save money directly for residents, which is not something we get to do as a local government all that often. So we've worked really hard on a few programs that include community choice aggregation. We purchased three-year supply for the entire community in 2020. That has locked in our rates at about $0.10 per kilowatt hour since 2020, which has been a real lifeline through this winter where, and we're, basic rates are more than triple that cost. So right now, everyone in Easton in this program is saving about $140 per month, every month on their energy. They're going to be nearing about $850 saved just this winter for my average household. And taken together, this program will have reduced all the folks living here on the program, their energy spending by about $5.7 million just in a six-month window, which is really something I'm quite proud of, and I know you are as well. Back to ARPA funding, we have, I think, been pretty creative with this where we are not large enough and we don't have the staff size where we are typically a grant administering body. However, when we were going for the school project back in 2018, I believe, Select Board members and other members of the community felt it was important that we adopt certain statutory allowances where you could have donation-driven taxation relief programs. And that is important, and the folks who have donated to that are appreciated tremendously. However, we thought, rather than try to create a brand-new program and start from scratch, why don't we just supercharge the ones that exist? And so we've committed a quarter million of that ARPA funding to the Taxation Aid Committee. To date, they've distributed more than $125,000 of that directly to homeowners in Easton. We made sure, and the committee made sure to their credit, to adopt a much broader lens on what financial need is. And most state programs, so again, you talk about the kind of frustrating reality for people. They see their local taxes go up, the town doesn't have significantly more money. There are programs that exist to help, but qualifying is incredibly difficult. And you end up in a community like Easton with a cost of living what it is. Very few people can stay in Easton and qualify for those state statutory programs, usually driven by federal poverty standards. And so what the committee did was adopt the 40B standard of 80% of area median income, which is, you know, working-class, full-time salaries in many cases, where folks earn enough money to not qualify for most statutory financial benefit programs, the kind of patchwork that we have in the United States, but still can feel some real financial duress from economies like this. And so this has really broadened who can receive this kind of assistance. And so those, we have, through that committee, distributed about $125,000 to date and are looking to do double that. Deputy Director Honan in Health and Community Services had took that idea, and again, the idea of it's working, let's do more of that rather than reinvent the wheel. Comparable program for a Veterans Fund serves, which this board adopted the policy for very recently, supporting every resident veteran of Easton. This is a very broad program that can provide direct financial assistance to Easton veterans and their dependents in the form of direct payments of up to $1,400 per household for food, fuel, utility, and other costs that have really been surging in recent years using ARPA funding. We anticipate more than $25,000 of disbursements just in the coming months since this launch, and we've allocated an additional $100,000 of ARPA to that program.
So if you got your excise bill this week like we did, you'll see a little pink paper in there that asks people if they do want to contribute to the taxation aid fund. So please consider that, even if it's $10, $15, $20, every little bit helps. If everybody in the community pitched in a little bit, that fund is really critical to our vulnerable population, our older people that are sometimes really looking at, do they, you know, purchase their medication or do they pay their electric bill? So it really is dire, and I appreciate everybody who has contributed in the thoughtfulness of that committee in allocating those funds.
And that's a big thing to hit upon too, is the Tax Aid Committee, right? The fact that it is transparent where these funds are going. We've got a group of, you know, town constituents here in town that are managing and overseeing it, so nobody needs to worry about where's this money going. That was some of the initial, I think, pushback we got on it.
Right. No overhead, no overhead on that.
Right.
Excellent.
Thank you. So pivoting from that into looking forward for next year, we are anticipating general fund revenue from all sources to grow just shy of 3% or approximately $2.73 million for a total general fund revenue of $94 million and change. The majority of this growth is attributable, as it typically is, to the nearly $70 million tax levy. And most of the other growth is attributable to the smaller but growing local receipts category of $7.9 million. This is a revenue category that is much more elastic and responsive to the economy. This is meals taxes, excise taxes, things of that nature. And so as consumer spending in those areas has really grown, that has helped these accounts on the local level be quite strong. Planned reserve and other fund use is cut by $150,000 at this time. That reflects what we will be considering the kind of planned sunsetting of ARPA revenue replacement funds to reduce frankly the pain when they're gone altogether. Rather than leveraging it to the max every single year until it's last year, we want to try a gradual ramp down, provided that we can balance the budget. So this would look at reducing that to $600,000 in the coming fiscal year. Enterprise revenues are growing meaningfully. That's a reflection of previously authorized debt service for water treatment, as well as growth in user base for sewer and increasing costs for solid waste and recycling. Enterprise funds are generally not covered in great detail at this point because unlike the general fund budget, enterprise funds, you can set your rates to match the anticipated expenditures, so they will balance. But in total, with enterprise, you're looking at a budget of just shy of $103 million for next year. So to touch on state aid, and I know it's been a longer night, but I think it's important to go into detail in this at least once during the budget cycle, and now is as good of a time as any. We, since drafting and sending the memo accompanying this presentation to the Select Board, have seen the local aid estimates from the new Governor Healy administration. And they are not good for Easton, to be frank. The full budget by the governor will be filed on March 1st. At the time we wrote this memo, we were forecasting what we thought would be a conservative, oblique state aid estimate of an increase of about 1.8%. Unfortunately, reality is worse because that estimate assumed that the $60 per people minimum aid, finally adopted by the legislature last year, would at least be the standard from where we start. But the governor's budget proposal cuts out in half and slides back to $30 per people minimum aid. And so what we actually end up with is a Chapter 70 education funding increase from the state of closer to $100,000 instead of $200, less than 1% from prior year. Aga, unrestricted general government aid has been proposed at 2%. So historically, unrestricted general government aid has been increased by what is called a consensus revenue forecast. So that's basically when state budget officials get together and look at the current year performance, the current year economy, and say, we think our revenue will go up X amount next year. For most of the former administration's tenure in a much more typical economy, that model was working quite well. There were certainly years where we would have hoped we would see more, but it closely tracked with what the state's actual revenue growth would be. Since COVID arrived, and you can see on this graph here, the blue bars represent the actual revenue collected by the Commonwealth. The yellow bar represents the year-over-year percentage growth to the Commonwealth's revenue. And the red bar is Easton's unrestricted government aid growth. So before COVID, those red and yellow lines used to be pretty close to each other. And since COVID, particularly starting with '21 and '22, '23 I anticipate will be the same once the books close. And if the budget does not get significantly amended from what has been filed, this is only going to worsen in '24. From fiscal '19 to '22, state revenue actuals, so setting aside whatever forecasting, we don't want to do actuals or actuals, right? State revenue actuals have grown by almost 40% from $30 to $40 billion. But unrestricted general government aid has grown by 6%. So doesn't work. Doesn't work. Had unrestricted general government aid kept pace, our annual revenue in this category would be about a million higher today. We started this with a deficit of $1.5 million. Had the revenue share continued, we'd have a pretty easy budget here coming up. And instead, we don't. This is going to be a tough year. Because with almost all organizational financing on the scale, it's incrementalism usually. You're not doing a zero-based budget, I guess, starting from scratch every year, thankfully. But the downside of that incrementalism is that any future increases are predicated on what becomes the new baseline. And so for every year that we get these artificially low consensus revenue forecast bumps, we are permanently harmed financially. So if we're a million short now, where we would have been had a revenue share followed actual revenue growth, unless something fundamental changes, that million will be 2 million years down the road, will be 3 million years down the road. This is really challenging. It's very disappointing for us to see. And it results once you account for the increase to state charges to Easton in some areas as much as 14%, so much more reflective of inflation on that side of the ledger. The net increase of revenue to Easton is, from the state, for an account of more than $13 million is roughly $100,000. So you're looking at a 1% to sub-1% increase to our second-largest revenue category at a time when the state's revenue is growing by double-digit percentages year-over-year. So disappointing. We will be, as we frequently have, filing requests for support, advocacy letters with our legislative delegation. Last budget cycle, the governor's budget started unrestricted data at 2.7%. Through the House and Senate process, that was increased to double that of about 5.4. Still not reflective of the 10-plus percent year-over-year revenue increases the state has seen, but obviously appreciated and a significant improvement. And so we'll be lobbying to that effect and working on that as well. Tying back to the kind of frustrations, you know, if you are living in Easton and you casually follow the news, the news coverage of this budget is how historic its revenue increase for education is, which it is in many regards for student auxiliary districts, which is great for those districts. But there are more than 100 minimum aid school districts in the Commonwealth. Easton is one of them. And so they will all be seeing closer to a 1% or sub-1% increase while others basically 10%, 12%. This is a reality we've grappled with for a long time. It has persisted through, you know, large growth factors for state revenue. It is challenging that we are seeing a consensus revenue outlook for the coming fiscal year of 1.6% when we know that sports betting revenue is coming online, we know that the fair share amendment is coming online, and we know that historically it's been closer to 10% a year. And usually, there's no walkback that says, oh, we were overly conservative. Here's a disbursement. So this is going to be a real challenge for us. I don't want to beat a dead horse, so I'll read it back.
Well, in addition to working with our legislators, who really do a great job advocating for us and, you know, you know, they work with us and we meet with them to talk about these things. But Connor's also on one of the policy committees with the Mass Municipal Association, and I'm on the municipal policy committee, so we advocate through those committees. The Mass Municipal is really a big influencer of the legislators and the governor in trying to advocate for the cities and towns. So we'll be certainly spending some time engaging with that.
You will. So moving into preliminary expenses, all of our departments were instructed to submit preliminary requests for fiscal 24 reflecting level services. With some limited exceptions for critical positions that are unfilled or services that we simply don't have the staff power to continue to meet. That is reflected with the town department preliminary request of just over $20 million, which is an increase of 5.7% over current year. It is reflective of existing service levels with the addition of two and one-quarter full-time equivalent. So on the town side, we employ roughly 160 to 70 full-time equivalents. This is a relatively marginal add for staff and inspectional services. That's a department who, you talk about elasticity there. The number of permits has increased by roughly 20% while their staff has not. So we need to address that so we can continue to have those folks have the time to get out there and keep these construction projects safe, as well as staff for administration and finance. So our office, like most departments in Easton, is significantly leaner in comparable communities. We will get into much more detail in April with all the departmental budget requests, as we always do with the Finance Committee. But wanted to put that out there now, that this is a kind of reactive fill that we have all talked about for years and was even highlighted in the goals the board adopted for me. Over the current fiscal year, we think it's challenging in this financial environment, but it would be, in my view, irresponsible to continue to not address these needs. We have, depending on which community that's comparable you look at, somewhere between 2/3 to half or fewer of the number of personnel in administration and finance. And, you know, there's a certain point of pride in being efficient and having a lot of output, and you need to try to build structures to be sustainable. And so that's something we'll try to do.
But also by not addressing that, our business would look at that as a business risk.
Correct.
And if we ignore those, it's not doing us any good service because that could cause us a lot of problems down the line if we don't address those as we see those.
That's right. The budget also currently has some non-personal operating costs anticipated in it, including phasing in the SEMRA assessment increases. So the way that the state So the way that the state grant worked for communities that built SEMRAC is that you have a five-year window, first three, the state funds most of your operating costs, and then they ramp that down in years four and five. We are heading into year three, so we still have the same amount of state funding coming in, but not dissimilar to the philosophy we're adopting with the sunsetting of ARPA. Where we can want to phase in some of these things so that it is more manageable year-over-year. I will include non-personal operating costs at the police department for O and M costs of body-worn cameras. So that's something we've been working on with the police chief for about a year and the district attorney's office as well. We have received grants to acquire the body-worn cameras up front end, but they are technology investments. They have data maintenance and storage costs. And so, we will need to be carrying that moving forward, and that will be a, a good tool for the community. And finally, some financial capacity building for cyber security. We talk about lean departments. We have Ann, IT manager. Mike does an incredible amount himself, leaning on contractual resources, just-in-time resources, things of that nature. We're currently in the middle of a network security assessment with some capital funding approved by voters, which is great to, to build out and make sure our cybersecurity practices are strong. But we want to continue to build capacity into that budget so that if, as part of any of these ongoing best practice assessments, there's anything that gets flagged as mission critical, we're not waiting a year to address it. Easton Public Schools' budget is a placeholder of 4% over prior year for a total of $47 million for $85,000. They are working through their concurrent budget process with the school committee and their financial staff, and we're staying in close communication with them as well. More detail on all of our budgets will be presented, as I mentioned, in April, looking towards the end of April, hopefully, by which point we will have a balanced budget. To just close out, summary of some of the strengths and challenges of our current position. I'm not going to read all of these as it would be repetitive, based on some of the things we've covered. But I thought it would be worthwhile to include this, if for nothing else, as a visual for anyone who's watching at home or for reviewing this online later. So where do we go from here? We, we have a preliminary deficit of $1.5 million. It's not outside the realm of normalcy. It's not the largest one we've had to deal with. But it's, it is not insignificant. So we have some work to do here. And unfortunately, there are items that are outside of our immediate control that can have a large impact on our budget outlook in a positive way or a negative way. That includes health insurance rates, which will be coming down, I believe, this or next week for employee and matiary healthcare through the GFC. We now know what the first cut of the state budget is. We're going to work with our delegation and, and advocate as much as we can to improve that, as well as rate-setting for a variety of other fixed costs that will have an impact on our budget. We will have a much better picture in probably four to six weeks. So in March or early April, we'll be doing a revision, as we do. And as I said before, hopefully by late April and definitely by mid-May, we will have a balanced budget. It's worth noting that this overview, of which more details in the memo that we'll share online with all staff, as we always do, uses or plans to use fewer reserve dollars, no stabilization dollars at this point, and fewer free cash dollars than our, than our own policies target. We've taken a lot of care to build our reserves, as we touched on earlier. And especially as we start to plan for the sunsetting of various federal grant programs like ARPA and ESAR, it will be really important for us to balance the needs of this coming fiscal year with the ability to soften the off-line of those grant programs, very likely using our local reserves that we built during that time period to maintain as much operational capacity as we can. So that's something that I'll be bringing up a budget subcommittee next week when we start meeting and trying to establish basically a consensus for a three-year fund management plan, looking at reserves and federal funds. And we'll keep working together with our colleagues on all the town departments, school leadership and Finance Committee until we balance the budget and bring it to town meeting anyway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connor. That was a really good recap of the goods, the bad, and the ugly. I think that, you know, we're always balancing off trying to find innovative ways to save money, and our department has, and you do a great job of that. And also, you know, trying to advocate for, for policies that help us become stronger, you know, and working with our legislators to get, to get that money. Any comments, questions?
The, your preliminary fiscal year budget presentation to us was exceptionally good. And I hope that people at home, once it becomes available, take the time to read it because they'll understand where we are, what we've done, and the goods and bad, the ugly. And I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to Wendy, too, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I do the talking. Wendy and Michael and a lot of other people spend a lot of time on making the financials work, so.
Yeah, thank you, Connor. Thank you, Wendy.
And just again, thank you both and everyone else involved in this process. And it was very long and tedious and there's a lot of back and forth. And it's really just an ongoing iterative process. So thank you for all that you do to hold together and make it really clear and transparent, which is a great thing at all. So thank you.
This room should be filled with people asking questions. Not trying to shame anybody at home, but I hope that people will send us emails. I hope that people really do watch this. It's really important. All right. Thank you, Connor. Next, the update for municipal facilities replacement, lease fire DPW and feasibility planning.
So I will get that from here. There's not a lot of new to report. We have a lot of internal work going on, starting with schematic design with various staff and user groups of these buildings, looking at HVAC systems, electrical security, things of that nature. That will in turn inform the actual schematic design plans that we are hoping will lead to some much more concrete budget figures in April. So things will start feeling a lot more real, I think, at that point. We have geotech work going on, or, excuse me, survey and wetland work going on at the proposed sites for development at Daly's Corner and 524 Depot Street. That should be wrapping up this month as well. So a lot of things starting to come together that will put us into really the last stretch of the schematic design phase before we're having discussions about setting a special town meeting in the summer and a potential debt exclusion over extra funding, so.
So pardon me, this hearing in my head. Look at this, look at the budget memo and, you know, how, how are we talking about doing something with, with another, a big project? And I just think of back, you know, some of the other tough times. Easton continued to do construction and continued to move things forward. And you have to do that because it does bring you savings on the other end. So that when we had that Doran Whittyor study and they talked about, you know, the schools and the amount of money to get them up, up to code and the safety and the useful life, and then also including all of our buildings, including the municipal, now's the time that we have to continue on with that because every year we wait, the costs go up, staggering costs, like millions of dollars. And there's never, if you wait till the good time to do it, there's not going to be a good time to do it. So it has to be strategic. And I know that when you're talking about moving these things forward, a lot of thought goes into that, and that's why we built up some of these other systems to, to help residents, you know, that, that do need it. And I'm glad to see that the municipal building committees are still moving strong on these and really looking and taking into account everything when they're making those decisions.
Yeah, I'll just say, too, we'll be meeting three times in the next six weeks. So there are some big votes that the, the committee will be participating in. And you're right, Don, when we look at just the structural costs and just the, you know, cost avoidance, but that's only one piece when we're talking about public safety. Talking about Department of Labor first, we talked about today the talent we have on staff at DPW to help tackle projects in-house that without such good talent people, we wouldn't have. Well, guess what? That's part of keeping these people on our town, too, is having people want to work here and want to be here and not be in buildings that are no longer programmatically suitable for what we're doing from both a public safety perspective and the people that are going to be out plowing at 2:00 in the morning today to make our roads safe for tomorrow's travel and the facilities that they're going to go back to to maintain their equipment, to, you know, feed their, their people and make sure they're getting in, you know, necessary rest, which they won't be tonight. So there's so much that goes into it. There's so many other costs that we don't factor in when we look at doing away with buildings built in the 1950s and 60s when this town was population of 10,000, and now we're nearly 26,000. So that's huge. We need to think about talent in this town and recruiting and, and the, you know, not losing that. And this room should be full. We should be talking about that. And, and much like we do with the school planning committee, we're going to need to do on the municipal building side, which is get out there and explain to people what this means to the future of this community. And that's a lot of legwork at it all. This is just getting there between now and April, and then the legwork begins.
That's why it's so awesome to have select board representatives on these committees because then we really get a deeper dive into it, you know, much more so than at general board meetings. So thank you for, you know, I know that it's, it's a lot of time that we spend just on the select board meetings, but then people don't realize that we're on a bunch of other committee meetings, too. Families, travel, work outside of this. A lot of people think this is our job. We all have, you know, full-time jobs outside of that. So I, I know that your schedule is very hectic, and making the commitment to be at these meetings is really important and helpful. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you to, and, you know, everybody here that you're, shared your sentiment and what everyone's doing. And I'd like to thank you a little earlier, too, for all the work that's been put into just our budget process alone. This is a very, very busy time for, for the town.
All right.
Well said.
All right. So the next, we are almost at the end here. The acceptance of the minutes from February 6th.
Salute Roger.
Second.
Roger and Stevens, all in favor? unanimous. Connor, any important town administrator notes or assistant town administrator notes?
I will, for like, I said enough.
I'll just add, today was the deadline to apply for the citizens' academy. However, we are extending it in hopes of attracting a few more people. So we just encourage people who are interested to visit our website. There's a very short application there and classes. Keep giving the last week of March, so it's something for that. So please, if you have an interest, please do chicken overfly.
All right. Terrific. Select board notes?
I love it.
Well, thanks to the DPW in advance for tonight. I saw the stripes streaked today. So I know we're expecting some weather. And I hope everybody is, stays safe in there, morning commute tomorrow. And I don't know, the kids, they're back from February vacation. So when you don't have kids anymore, your whole perception of dates has changed. But maybe they'll get a snow day.
They will in the morning.
I have no respect, expect me to know. I saw the stripes. I have no idea.
It's only...
For the sex, I, the chance changed, I mean...
And as parents of young ones, Jen and I will say, we just sent them back.
I can really believe me. Well, they can go outside, couldn't they? Because they really, really want that, so.
It's wonderful when you, when you see how that wheel changes when your kids get a little bit older. Awesome. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Salute Roger. Second.
Roger and Stevens, all in favor? unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Eka, for coming tonight. Have a good week, everyone. We'd love to pay for...
Remind her I had no school to me.
Oh, they're already canceled it, yeah. Thunk to Berkeley and, and she's very excited because she's a senior, so she won't have to make it up.
Oh, man. I will say, I got so lucky. Every year, we...